You know what? Why you want? Alright, I think we're good. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, sure. I, well, one second. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, it's more than just. Thank you. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Counselor Drinkwater.
Yeah.
Counselor Elliott.
Yeah.
Mayor Leahy.
Yeah.
Counselor Mercier.
Yeah.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Yeah.
Counselor Chow.
Yeah.
Counselor Conway.
Yeah.
Eighth President. Um, any moments of silence? Uh, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shawn Callahan is a friend of mine. It is an honor as an elected local official and a friend to request a moment of silence in Duncan Chamber for his father, Jim Callahan. Jim was a lifelong resident of Lowell. He was the husband of Marcia Early Callahan, with whom he spent forty-seven wonderful years of marriage. Tomorrow, Jim would have celebrated his seventy-eighth birthday. He was born on August twenty-sixth, nineteen forty-two, and was the oldest son of former Lowell Police Sergeant John O. Callahan and Rita Bell Callahan. Jim attended the MacHale Conception School and graduated from Lowell High School with the class of nineteen sixty. After graduation, Jim enlisted with the United States Air Force working on the B-52 Strato Fortress as part of the Strategic Air Command, SAC, during the Vietnam War. He was honorably discharged in nineteen sixty-six while holding the rank of Airman Second Class Bomb Systems Navigator. For over thirty years, he was employed as a lab technician at Raytheon in both Lowell and Waltham, until his retirement in two thousand and four. He enjoyed supporting the local teams and was an avid Boston Red Sox, Boston Bruins, New England Patriots, and Boston Celtics fan. He also enjoyed playing golf. He actually achieved two holes in one in his lifetime. Jim was always known for his warmth, kindness, and most especially, his sense of humor. Although he had many passions throughout his life, spending time with his family, especially his grandchildren, brought him the most joy. Along with the love of his life, Marcia, Jim is survived by his four children, sons Sean and James, along with his wife Valerie, and daughters Erin and Cara, as well as his three beloved grandchildren, Audrey, James, and Claire. In addition, Jim was the oldest of fourteen Callahan siblings, and he also was a surrogate older brother to many of his extended family, including the Dunlop V and Bell families of Lowell. We extend our condolences to all those whom Jim touched throughout his life. He was truly the salt of the earth, and he will be dearly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if anyone, everyone else is good, I have two myself. Uh, like a moment of silence for Wayne White Junior of Lowell. Wayne R. White Junior, beloved son, brother, uncle, nephew, cousin, friend, communicant of the MacHale Conception Church, passed away unexpectedly on August twenty. He was the son of Wayne R. White and Anne C. Flood White. Wayne also leaves a sister, Megan Bain, and her husband Daniel of Lowell, as well as their two children, Benjamin and Cameron. Born in Boston, Massachusetts, March twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-eight, Wayne attended the Lowell Public Schools, graduated from Lowell High School nineteen ninety-six. Following high school, uh, Wayne attended Providence College and received his degree in mathematics. He then worked for Microsoft in the state of Washington as a test engineer. Uh, Wayne enjoyed watching sports, avid fan of all Boston teams. His most treasured role was that of uncle. In addition to his immediate family, Wayne leaves behind many aunts, uncles, cousins, and friends who will sorely miss him. Uh, one more moment of silence uh, for Counselor Noon's mother. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Duncan Chamber for memory of Lach Malay, mother of Counselor Desaniv, who passed away at her home with her son and family on August fourteenth. Lach and her family fled the deadly Khmer Rouge in Cambodia and found their way to refugee camp in Thailand. Nineteen eighty-two, uh, they headed to the unknown with her husband and their four sons and three daughters. Catholic charities helped them settle into a one-bedroom converted barn on the, uh, on the property of a host family in Stoughton, Massachusetts. After one year, they reallocate, relocated to Elston-Brighton area, where the family was no longer eligible for financial assistance. All the four boys went to school during the day and worked the evenings, giving their earnings to their mother. Unbeknownst to them, their mother saved the money and in time made a down payment for a house in Rosendale. In this house, where she cared for her now eight children and her ailing husband, she also cared for two Haitian girls, two Vietnamese children from the neighborhood who otherwise had no daycare while their parents were. Lach Malay was compassionate, kind, and generous person. She loved all of her children, her grandchildren, her siblings, and her very large extended family. She sacrificed for all them without question and felt her reward uh, as she watched their accomplishments and their successes, both large and small, to be loved and remembered by many for many years to come. I'd like to offer a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mayor's Mayor's Business Communication Remote Participation, uh, need a motion to accept and place on a file by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Chow. City Clerk Business need the minutes of the Rules Subcommittee on August tenth. City Council Meeting August eleventh for the acceptance, need a motion to place on, to accept and place on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Um, not being seven o'clock, we'll go right to motion communications by the man. Motion responses, uh, motion response demand fees. Counselor Elliott.
Um, yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, and uh, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. I wonder if you could just give a brief synopsis, um, regarding these fees. There's, there's a number, I was contacted by a number people throughout the city that are, you know, they're doing their best to make ends meet. Um, however, these demand fees, um, uh, on, on local property taxes really applies a great burden and then the interest keeps building. So, Mr. Baldwin, do you want to just, um, I appreciate the report, it's a good, it's a good report. So, um, we have taken action to help Lowell residents financially by extending the fourth quarter bill. Um, but this has come to my attention and, um, I want to go to Mr. Baldwin, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, uh, Counsel, I mean, uh, sorry, Mr. Baldwin, then this, and then Counselor Mercier. Did you have a question for us, Counselor Mercier?
No, I have the response.
Okay. Alright, Ms., Mr. Baldwin, you want to go first?
It, it's up to the Counselor.
Something that did, I thought Counselor Elliott asked.
Well, I, I wanted to give a synopsis, but there's, there's an option here to proceed with the Home Rule petition to the Legislature to provide relief to taxpayers and I, you know, I, I, I think it makes sense, um, to proceed with this. I don't know what the likeliness is, but I think we have to at least put the, the, you know, the issue forward. I'm sure we're not the only other, only community with, um, that, that's challenged with this, so, um, you know, it's, it's a fifty percent delinquent in, interest, so, um, I, I wanted an explanation from, um, from this Chief Financial Officer, and then I was gonna make that motion.
Okay, Counselor Mercier, right next to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to respond to the, uh, response with respect to the motion to reduce the demand fee on taxes established by state law. I had a very similar motion previously, and I want to reiterate what I said before. To sent it to, um, with that sta, that sentence that states, once the fee is set at thirty dollars, the collector's office has no ability to reduce or waive these fees once added. I find that very hard to believe. The scenario that came before us leading to this motion was something the state legislature and the previous city council never in their wildest dreams could imagine such a crisis happening. This pandemic. This was, this was a healthy slash fina, financial state of emergency. No, rather, a, a national emergency. And you're telling me that we can't reduce or eliminate the demand fee? People were getting sick. Their jobs were shuttered, closed, no work, no money. We cannot reduce or eliminate the demand fee? How heartless is that? In life, there are some gray areas. Let this be one of them. I know the city counts on every nickel, but during an emergency of this magnitude, when Lowell residents lost their jobs for three months or so, through no fault of their own, we can stand tall and show compassion. Therefore, I agree with the mayor or the motion. Let's file a Home Rule petition and do what's right, and I second that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, to your counsel, Elliot.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, there are people that, um, that truly need our help. Uh, but as you see in the motion response, there are a lot of people that, to me, um, you know, there's eighteen thousand demand charges that are issued every year. Um, to me, not, some of them are just delinquent taxpayers, and that's why there are demand fees, so I do support sending a Home Rule down, um, petition down. What I would like to know, um, Mr. Baldwin, does the city, did this Home Rule petition change, would the city have some flexibility on who the consistent delinquent taxpayers are um, versus those that have paid their taxes their, their entire life? They've come upon, you know, hard times, and this is where we should be able to provide relief versus, you know, those, those taxpayers, they, 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 they don't, there's a consistent pattern of delinquency.
Mr. Baldwin, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, proposed language for a Home Rule petition does, does just that. It tries to take into account the particular taxpayer's, um, history, uh, their payment history, also their socioeconomic, uh, status as to whether they are eligible for what we're calling limited tax amnesty. Um, the, the issue at hand is that the statute provides that if the fee uh, is at thirty dollars, then the collector does not have the authority to waive it. Uh, it is, however, within the jurisdiction of the council to amend the fee. And if the fee, uh, were less than fifteen dollars, then that, that dollar threshold gives the, the collector the, um, the discretion to waive or reduce the fee. Uh, we, we feel that this, um, Home Rule petition is a more fair way uh, to, to categorize who is or is not, um, qualifying for this, uh, this amnesty. So, we feel this is a more fair and equitable way to treat taxpayers.
Okay, great.
Counselor Elliott, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the most. No, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, motion was made and seconded, so I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Sure. Can I just ask, um, when you ask the difference between someone in hardship and someone that's always kind of late with their taxes, um, sometimes there's no difference though, right? I mean, obviously, if people pay their stuff late, they're juggling, so what's, what would be the difference be? You know what I mean? If, if someone always kind of just pays things late, aren't they basically juggling and in financial hardship too? So, should we be distinguishing that?
There is, um, uh, if I may, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, the language in the amnesty proposal does just that. So, the way that it's written, to be eligible, a taxpayer must be in need of assistance. Uh, they must fit within a certain, uh, income eligibility, uh, based on data from the census. They must also not have any outstanding parking tickets or late fees uh, on taxes, uh, motor vehicle excise or, uh, real estate, whether that's, uh, real property or personal property. Um, those would be the qualifying criteria to be eligible for the amnesty. Um, tho, those are just suggested criteria, I suppose, that, um, you know, the council could amend that if we're the entire body.
Okay.
And then this, the intent is to kind of differentiate between those taxpayers, um, who may be scofflaws with those who have fallen upon hard times and, and need some assistance.
Okay. Alright. Um, I just wanted to make that point. Alright, so the motion was seconded, made and seconded, so now we get roll call?
We don't need a roll call.
No. Okay, alright. Uh, Counselor Rourke? Alright, alright, so we're all set on this, so we have the motion seconded and made, okay. And it gets sent down?
The motion is, the motion is.
It's gonna be referred to the Law Department to develop. Alright, thank you. Any other questions on this? Um, marijuana social equity issues, Counselor Drinkwater, I think? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager for this report. Um, I thought kind of very informative and, um, was, uh, pleased to see the, the results. And, and just to kind of briefly summarize, I filed this motion just to get a, a picture of, um, what was put in place in terms of social equity provisions, um, for the marijuana licensing, both for retail and, and cultivation. I know the state had, uh, certain regulations in place to be able to consider, uh, certain, certain enterprises, um, and given priority, uh, for reasons of social equity. And as the report stated, um, while the, this permitting and licensing review process took place before the, the state regulation put in place, there was a, a really good process, uh, to be able to consider applicants based on social equity. Um, and while I, I know at the state level it's been, um, oftentimes difficult for these types of applicants to, to climb the many hurdles that, that, uh, are needed to get to, to in order to achieve a license. Uh, there were some good results, um, in the, the retail category. Um, one of the licenses was awarded to a, a woman-owned business, and the, the COO of that company also happened to be a woman of color. And, uh, in terms of cultivation, there was, um, a, a, a woman-owned applicant and also a disadvantaged business enterprise that was awarded a license. So, I found these, um, the, the results, both in terms of the process and the outcomes, to be, uh, very heartening and, and hope that, um, that we continue to keep these things, uh, in mind as we consider applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Motion Response C, uh, Human Resource Audit, uh, Counselor Drinkwater and Counselor Elliott. Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I, uh, again, was, um, it, this included the, uh, the RFP, this, uh, included in the motion response was the, the RFP that was, um, put out for, uh, a, a human resources, uh, audit. And I, I thought the, um, the RFP that was put out was, uh, extremely comprehensive, uh, and thorough, and really, I think, captured, um, the, the spirit of the motion and what it really intended to, to capture, uh, just in terms of making sure that we're doing everything we possibly can, uh, as a city to make sure we're, um, extending opportunities and, and using the best HR practices, um, to be inclusive uh, of everyone in, in the city. So, I thought the, like I said, the RFP was extremely thorough. Um, I know that, um, two firms had, uh, responded, um, a, as it said in the response, uh, the, the price tags, I think, were somewhat high. That may have, um, I think, probably partially been a result of the fact that the RFP itself, uh, was so thorough and included a lot of different, um, functions within it. So, um, you know, I just, I know it was kind of left as an option there to potentially engage with the, the bidders and see if there might be a way to, uh, you know, change around the scope, uh, to make this a little bit more, uh, doable, uh, based on the, the, you know, financial circumstances. So, I would just, um, you know, e- encourage that process to, to continue and hope that we can engage with, with the bidders to see if, um, we can maybe work to get, uh, the scope maybe, uh, narrowed a little bit and the price tag a little bit lower. Um, and I did also just want to ask, uh, relative to outside funding, I know much of the discussion around this motion, um, you know, was taking in the, the reality of the, the fiscal picture, uh, that we're in right now. Um, even in good times, it's obviously difficult to find, uh, money through general appropriations for this sort of stuff, but given, um, the fiscal picture we're, we're in, uh, even more difficult. I just kind of wanted to ask, um, we, there's been discussions about, uh, the new, um, Race Equity Fund through the Greater Lowell Community Foundation, also through the city. Has there been any, um, discussion or engagement, potential, um, you know, foundations that might be interested in, in funding this work? Whether it's through, uh, Greater Lowell Community Fund directly, or maybe they have recommendations of other, um, outside foundations that, that could be interested?
Oh.
Sure, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, through you to the council. Um, I did have a conversation with Mr. Lenahan from the Greater Lowell Community Foundation some, uh, weeks ago. Uh, he did express the, uh, interest in possibly contributing to funding. Uh, maybe not funding all of it, obviously. Um, and we also were also looking at, were there any grants available? We've been unable to find grants that would pay for this particular, um, effort. And so, uh, another option, um, is the, is the, uh, fund that was, uh, vote two weeks ago by the council that would be established where people could voluntarily donate. That's another possible source, once that was, uh, up and, and established. Another possibility is, as, as you mentioned, uh, Counselor Drinkwater, going back to the, um, uh, bidders and negotiating, uh, perhaps a, a, a phased approach or a smaller scope in different phases, you know, the, which, which would be more affordable, depending, uh, in, in achieving the goal that was intended in the RFP, but doing it over a period of time based on funding, whether it's through, uh, the fund that I just mentioned that the council is gonna establish, uh, whether it's through, uh, the only foundation that expressed interest has been the, uh, Greater Lowell Community Foundation. Um, so, uh, first, we wanted to get the scope of what the, the expense was. That seemed to be, obviously, the, the logical, uh, starting point. So, now that we have that, um, the other option would be to put it out to bid, again, with, with just a smaller, uh, scope and a, a, uh, smaller stated budget is, is another option. So, you know, we put this on to update the council as to what, uh, what the results were of trying to seek the bid and, and really look to the council, um, for some, um, input as to what direction you'd prefer us to follow. Uh, as you point out, this is a tough time in, in budget. Uh, it doesn't mean this isn't, uh, uh, an important effort, but it's just, you know, currently, we're in a, in a tight squeeze on, on the budget. So, um, that's, uh, that's the nature of the report. It, it may make sense to try and go back, uh, and have some, uh, discussion with the, you know, the, uh, bidders to see if they can, uh, and according to the Law Department, I think Christine O'Connor is on, we, we are able to do that, uh, to try and, uh, n- negotiate, um, a, a smaller scope, um, and, and also, uh, a smaller price tag.
Thank you. All set, Counselor Drinkwater?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott, did you have anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Madam Manager, I'm just curious, who, where, where did the scope come from? How was it developed? Where was the input? Um, was it sort of standard or similar to?
We looked at, we looked at a number of, um, sources to come up with a scope that would be, uh, comprehensive. Uh, a, as you can see from the scope, it looks at a number of things, including not just equity and diversity, but hiring practice. Uh, uh, you know, what, what is the staffing in terms of HR? Some, some information. But we looked at other communities that have, had put out some all one and tried to have as, as all-encompassing a, a, a bid. But as you can see, the price tag, um, uh, of the bids that came in, um, went up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so.
Right, no, I agree. I mean, my, my point was, we, uh, answered, um, relative to any state or federal funding is available for, but I, I like the, um, the course of action that you're gonna pursue, uh, looking for funding sources outside and, you know, when that equity fund is up and running, that could be a potential source. Um, in the meantime, I, I don't know if we have received it, but did we get a copy of, or at least the executive summary of the HR report? Um, that was, or the, the audit that was done for the school committee and what? done for the school committee and what some of the recommendations are? And, you know, in the meantime, perhaps we can, you know, start to identify the suggestions or recommendations in that report and see how they align with, with the city as well. So, just a thought.
We have that and we can provide the council with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Counselor Chow?
Yeah, Don Mu. Thank you, Mr. Manager, through you to Madam Manager. Thank you for the report. It's a very detailed and very, very quick response concerning the difficulty and the complexity of, of the request. And your answer earlier that you did look at other communities, communities, how come out with their, the protocols and different methods of doing the, the proposal. Just in terms of, I know you can't really compare apples to oranges because each city or towns are different from one to the next, but just looking at different price range, do you have an idea of what the price range would be from, you know, what other communities are paying from the lowest to the highest for these bids?
Counsel, it seems that it would depend on what the scope of services are. So if, if the scope were in terms of current staffing methodology and so forth, that would probably be a much lower price than all of the other assessments that were, were looked at in the scope of services. So it, it, it would depend on, on what the, what the scope is. And that's why we think if we could, it may make sense based on the, the responses to the bids to, to speak to the bidders and see if they can do a price breakdown of doing it in different phases so that we have a better idea of, you know, in, in terms of priority. We'd bring that back to the council, let the council know what the cost would be and what the scope of service would be for each phase, for example.
Thank you.
You're on mute.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. All right, we'll jump into the public hearing and we'll continue after this. 4-1, vote to approve the 112 budget for the City of Lowell for September FY21. Second reading, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell, in city council vote approving a continuing appropriation order to fund the 112 budget, City of Lowell, for September of fiscal year 2021, $41,909,381. Open the public hearing to all those in favor. In favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up the hearing to anyone opposed. Opposed? That portion is closed. Roll call? Oh yeah, motion to adopt by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater, roll call? Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Newm? Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just for the, so the council knows, we will be bringing in the FY21 budget, which will essentially be a nine-month budget. We'll have that on the agenda for the September 8th meeting and then the, with the intent to have the hearing on the overall budget two weeks later. I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar.
Thank you. Public, utility public hearings. 5-1, National Grid requests installation of 375 feet of gas main for infrastructure reinforcement from 1,500 to 1,524 Gorham Street. Second reading? If I may, we have members of, of National Grid here, I'm going to, I'm going to let into the meeting right now, so just hang on for one sec. So if there are any, there are any questions for them?
Second reading? Yeah, I can open this one in favor.
So now I'll open the, open the hearing for all those in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anybody opposed? Open it up to anybody opposed? That portion of the motion is, that portion is closed. Need a motion to re, refer the inspector, wire inspector for report and recommendation by Counsel Rock, seconded by Counsel Samaras? No roll. 5-2, National Grid requests installation of 700 feet of gas mains for infrastructure reinforcement along Gorham Street from Saratoga Street to Rivers Edge Road. Open the hearing to all those in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
Yes.
That portion? Sure.
This is Chris Mar, Supervisor of National Grid. This is a project to, related to the next item on the agenda, the installation of a gas regulator station, but it's for a main replacement to improve the condition of the gas mains in the area and to augment the system.
Okay, thank you. That portion is closed. Anybody opposed? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? That portion of the meeting is closed. Need a motion by Counsel Conway, seconded by Counsel Elliot, third for, to the inspector for a report and recommendation. All those in favor? 5-3, request, National Grid requests reconstruction gas pressure regulator and add scatter system to the intersection of Palau and Gorham Streets. Open up the hearing to anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Yes, again, this is Chris Mar, Supervisor of National Grid Gas. This project is a new gas regulator station that will replace the existing station, which is currently located at the intersection of Boston and Spencer Street on the other side of St. Patrick Cemetery. The new station is being replaced in order to comply with new state and federal code to better supply the area distribution system and to install remote skated telemetry to allow our gas control office real-time views of the gas pressure. All sidewalks and roadway adjacent to the project will be replaced to meet city requirements.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? That portion is closed. Anyone speak in opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer a wire inspector for report and recommendation by Counsel Rock, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Thank you.
Could I make a, could I make a statement to National Grid?
Sure. Counsel Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are times when National Grid comes before us and I will be the first to criticize and squawk and complain, but I want to just states and some representative is here right now from National Grid to say that I placed a call the other day for a person that had a tree limb fall down and get stuck in the electrical wires. And I called National Grid and within 15 minutes, they came up and they took it out of there. So I'm, not only that, but they cut it up and got rid of it. So if you want to bring that message back to your bosses, I'm very, very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mercier. Back to the communications. 6-2, informational reports, information and construction update. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the update that we routinely give our city engineer, Ting Chang, is, is on the Zoom call as well as Natasha Vance, our traffic and transportation engineer. So I don't know if there are any specific questions or the council wants us to go through the report, but it's an update as to what's happening on construction.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot?
I'd like to make a motion, it is a comprehensive report, it's a good update. If there's no objection, we can hold the Transportation Subcommittee for, you know, to get a, the questions and answers or more of a presentation, but, or we can get an update now, but I, I would like to have a further transportation subcommittee as well.
Sure, seconded by Counsel Samaras? So motion referred to Transportation Subcommittee by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Samaras. Any further discussion on the report? To our Counsel Elliot?
If I could, maybe just on the overpass, Natasha, how long is, is there any way that we can address some of the, the timing of the light? Because it seems like there is more of a backup on the new access road going in and out of the city and not as much traffic kind of intersecting as that is. Is it possible to change the timing of it at certain times? I'm sure the old signals have probably man, need to be manually changed, but as more, more vehicles are on the road, it seems like traffic getting out of the city is becoming more difficult.
Yeah, um, yes, Counselor, thank you for the question. Certainly, we can, all of those are city-owned signals, so we can, they don't, they aren't currently coordinated, which they will be after the project, but we can certainly go take a look and see if there's some adjustments that need to be made, particularly during peak hours in the morning and in the evening, people trying to get in and out.
I think that would be helpful. I know there's a lot of traffic anyway, but it seems like, if we could take a look at that, that'd be, that'd be good. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Drinkwater, seconded by Counsel Mercier. 6-3, communications. Appoint Candace Lawrence to the Subs, Subsustainability Council, Sustainability Council. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Mercier. We got motion. Need a roll call, roll call? Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Newm? Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Thank you. Votes. Votes from the city manager. Vote to accept and expend $40,244.36 AFG award. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to accept a gift from the Greater Lowell. The one before, excuse me. $40,000, the AFG award. Thank you. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager to accept and expend an assistance for firefighters grant program awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $40,244.36 dollars for the City of Lowell fired upon. Need a motion to adopt and by Counsel Chow, seconded by Counsel Rock. Roll call? Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Newm? Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Eight yeses. 7-2, vote to accept a gift from the Greater Lowell Tech, Technical High School. Thank you. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to accept a gift from the Greater Lowell Technical High School of a 1989 International S1600 rack body truck with plow used by the City of Lowell Department of Public Work. Need a motion to accept by Counsel Rock, seconded by Counsel Conway, roll call? Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Newm? Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Thank you. Vote to accept and expend?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add, I, I, I want to obviously send our thanks to the Lowell Technical High School. This one caught me by surprise, given the age of the truck, but Commissioner Clancy, who, they inspected it, it only has 14,000 miles on it, believe it or not, and will be used as a salter. Wasn't a great plow truck and that's why it didn't get used much, but they generously have offered it to the city and Commissioner Clancy feels they can put it to good use. So, hard to believe, but that's, that's what we're dealing with. So, many thanks to the Greater Lowell Technical High School.
Yes, thank you. Many thanks. Thank you. 7-3, vote to accept and expend 12,500 municipal energy technical assistance grants. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a municipal energy technical assistance grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources to implement fleet feasibility and technical assistance for clean energy projects at the Stock Close of Middle School. Need a motion to adopt by
I'll move.
To our Counsel Samaras, seconded by Counsel Conway, roll call? Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Newm? Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Thank you. 7-4, vote, apply, accept, expend 28,935 JAG FY2020 grant. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager to apply, accept and expend funds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program FY2020 in the amount of $28,935. Motion to adopt by Counsel Drinkwater, seconded by Counsel Chow, roll call? Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Newm? Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Eight yeses. 7-5, vote to adopt by city manager to execute temporary access agreement to 44 and 71 YMCA Drive. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary access agreement between the City of Lowell and the Mass Department of Transportation relative to 44 and 71 YMCA Drive Lowell, Mass. Need a motion to Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Chow, seconded by Counsel Mercy. Roll call. Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noom. Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Thank you. Seven-six, vote authorizing the city manager to issue preparedity specs. Wait for reading, reading, second, permission to waive the second reading, reading by title. Motion, Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing city manager, after reasonable investigation, issue property, propriety specifications for the fire alarm master box, door access control system, and sidewalk light fixture within the City of Lowell. Motion to adopt by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Samaras. Roll call. Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yeah.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noom. Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight-eight-one, sixty-day trials. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell and City Council order, pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning Section 2266-6, therefore entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to sixty days. Motion to adopt by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Roll call. Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noom. Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chau?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Thank you. Nine, ordinances from the city manager. Ordinance to amend Chapter 150 fees. Motion to refer to a public hearing on September 8, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. by Counsel Samaras, seconded by Counsel Conway. All those in favor? Ten, reports, Subcommittee reports, zoning Subcommittee, August 25, 2020. Counsel Elliot, I believe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief, because this was one of many meetings, I believe, that will have relative to housing in the city. And the course of this meeting is in response to motion by Counsel Rourke and Counsel Noom regarding expanding housing in the city. So the, Mr. Slago and Mr. Al went through scenarios and some options that were, could be possibly available to expand housing in the city. We will receive a report on those options that they have been working on in the future. But there were a lot of discussion on, you know, maybe creating new ordinances, looking at a change of use, looking at zoning changes throughout the neighborhoods as well. But there was a request from, there was a request from one of the neighborhood leaders to get more information as far as, you know, where the need is, where is it coming from, which, which makes sense. So, there was, there wasn't a motion, but there was a request of the Subcommittee to get additional information from the administration, an inventory of what is available or what the city currently has in terms of homeownership, rental unit, affordable housing, Section 8, sort of a, you know, snapshot of everything that we have for housing in the city. So there was, there was no formal motion. I thought most, point was made by Counsel Drinkwater relative, you know, kind of, you know, how, how we can address this, what is the need? And there was, I think you shared some information that I think is helpful, I think it's useful that you come back correctly from wrong, Counsel Drinkwater and the organization, I think there's a Metropolitan Planning Council that, that sort of provided some information data on the number we should be generating in the city. It's about 300 per year. Last year, the city generated 44 units. That does not include the wind, the two structures, the wind development taking place in the Hamilton Canal. So, there clearly is a need in the city, but where and how we get to that point will be a long discussion. There was a request to go to the neighborhoods at some point in time to get input on housing or zoning changes, which the city manager agrees it's a good idea. So I, I know it's a lot, but it was, I think it was a productive meeting, it was the first meeting. I'll go to the maker of the motion, Counsel Rourke, if he wants to add anything further, but it was a first step, a long dialogue, trying to be affordable housing, housing opportunities for first-time homeowners, new families, and providing that balance in the city and the, in the city that's very densely populated to begin with. So, Mr. Mayor, that's a report of progress. Once we get a follow-up report from Mr. Slago and the city administration, we will call another meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Everybody's all set? Yeah, motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Petitions. We have one property damage. Motion refer to law department, or report and recommendation by Counsel Chow, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Miscellaneous. Counsel Patel requests insulation of a streetlight on pole at the beginning of Shirley Lane. Motion refer to law department for report and recommendation by Counsel Samaras, seconded by Counsel Mercy. Eleven-three. Miscellaneous, Brian Cowell requests continued trash removal service at 24 Nesman Street. Motion refer to the city manager for report and recommendation. And DPW. Sure, Madam Manager?
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I met with DPW about this. We will coordinate with Waste Management and the homeowner, not just this homeowner. There are two or three others that could be impacted. We are working on this. I just want to assure them that we will, we will come up with a solution for them. So, we'll be in touch with, with the homeowner and the others that are likewise affected.
Okay. So, motion for a report and recommendation by Counsel Conway, seconded by Counsel Chow. Eleven-four, miscellaneous. Markley Group LLC requesting maniflammable material license for additional 15,100 gallons of diesel fuel, too, at Two Prince Avenue. Motion to refer a public hearing on September 22, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Eleven-five, miscellaneous, Michael DeAngelis requests insulation of handicap parking sign at 133 Jordan Street. Motion to refer to Transportation Engineer for report and recommendation by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Conway. Before we get into the motions, Counsel Conway?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Sure.
To ask the city manager for a brief update on the, on the school, on the school buildings. And I know that I put a motion in a couple of weeks ago, and I'm sure it's taken a while, obviously, to compile, compile all that information. But I think that because of the timing and parents, you know, are certainly looking forward to having their, their children go back to school, but they certainly want to have a safe environment as the staff also. So I wonder if, if we could just take a couple of minutes and ask the city manager to give a brief up, update on what's going on with our, our school building.
I'm sure I need a second. I think we need a motion to suspend. Seconded by Counsel Chow. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Two weeks ago, we did give a summary of what, all the work that the city is doing in our schools to ready them for reopening, especially around the COVID reopening recommendations of DESI. And so I do have a brief summary that I can provide the council tonight as far as what has happened, what has been happening and ongoing. So let me just start by saying, DPW, and the commissioner is on this call, as well as Mr. Medei, continues to prioritize optimizing the HVAC systems in the city's 30 schools. And we're following DESI's recommended guidelines. The school department, I believe it was last week, reported that the target capacity for students in the schools upon reopening is 25% of the students. So, the school department is coordinating with DPW to select the spaces that will be part of this initial reopening. Classrooms without windows, for instance, will not be utilized. Classrooms that have been partitioned into smaller classrooms in the past, building renovations, without giving consideration to HVAC systems likewise will not be utilized. The city has already started to receive the HEPA air filters, air purifiers that we recently purchased. As I had reported, we had ordered 1,000 air purifiers so that every classroom space would have a state-of-the-art HEPA air filter. And, and those have already started coming in. Again, I think we're very lucky that we are out ahead of the crowd in ordering these so that our order is, is being filled. This, again, as I told the council last week, the city has spent over $400,000 on these individual air purifiers that are state-of-the-art. They're critical to filtering and cleaning the air in our schools, and it simulates the MERV-13 filters that I know there have been talked about a lot in the media. So, this is, is the saying. I also want to repeat, because there's been discussion about bringing in a third party to assess our schools and what needs to be done to reopen them in accordance with the COVID guidelines as set forth by DESI. As I stated to the council before, we have already brought in a third party. We have brought in Garcia, Galuska, and D'Souza consulting engineers, and they've completed their HVAC assessment for school building reopening. We're awaiting their final report and recommendations, but it's important to know that this consultant, this engineering firm is currently working with Perkins Eastman team on the Lowell High School project. And Perkins Eastman is on the DESI list for consultants for this very purpose. So, this is, and is working with Perkins Eastman. I also want to let the council know that DESI recommended that we utilize this firm, in part because we contacted DESI very early on in the process during the summer, and they indicated that this firm is an approved firm, is already working with Perkins Eastman, who is on their list. And so, and they were already familiar with the city. So I, DESI recommended we utilize Garcia, Galuska, and D'Souza to complete this HVAC assessment. And as I said, they've completed the assessment. We're awaiting their report and recommendations. And, and again, this is in accordance with DESI guidelines. So, I want to assure the council again, and the families, and staff, and faculty, we are utilizing every step to make certain that we're following what DESI has recommended for a safe opening, reopening of schools in accordance with the COVID guidelines. I also want to report that our preliminary recommendations report that the recommended MERV-8 filters and certain heating units, the HEPA air filters and purifiers that, as I said, are equal to MERV-13. I realize I'm getting down in the weeds, but those are in, do the majority of the work, which will be in every classroom. We've ordered parts. I mentioned to the council last week, the exhaust fans on top of the roofs of the schools that are essential for bringing in fresh air, and that's another recommendation that DESI makes, that we have those operational. I think I misstated. I think I told you we had 400 of them. We have more than 400. We have 468. I don't know if they're growing like mushrooms, but we've got more of them. And we're in the process of repairing, ordering parts. Many of those parts are now coming in, and we will have those roof vents ready for school reopening. So, that's important. All, all exhaust fans will be operational. I'll tell you how in just a moment. But the, I also wanted to report that 94% of all the windows are operational. Two DPW crews are working in the schools to make necessary repairs on the remaining 6% of the windows. Again, according to the recommendations, a minimum of one will be operational in each classroom. We'll try and make sure more than one. We're working all the necessary hours to get this done. DPW is working time to complete these repairs, and they're doing yeoman's work. We're also looking to hire outside contractors if necessary, so the work can be accomplished in time for a reopening of the school. The, the reopening that we're looking at, according to DESI, they're recommending that the DPW does a building flush-out, and that is seven days prior to reopening. And that means operating the HVAC systems 24/7 at 100% of outdoor airflow. So, we want to get this system, all systems, operational one week before school is due to be back in, which is why we're looking to bring in extra hands if need be. And so, we're coordinating. In addition, they recommend that, this is part of the DESI recommendations, that all HVAC systems are operational two hours before the start of school every day to have the airflow in, in the schools. And we are coordinating with the school department to make sure that that happens on an ongoing basis. So, the MSBA roof and boiler projects are ongoing at the Bailey, Daley, Greenhenge, McAuliffe, Rogers, and Sullivan, and we're coordinating those projects with the school reopenings as well. So, I, again, while this focus of this report is on the ventilation and airflow in the schools, because that's been a much-talked-about topic around the pandemic and the COVID-19 guidelines, DPW is working also with the building department and other contractors necessary to make repairs across the various trades for other state-required inspections, so that our schools will be ready for reopening on time. So, I wanted to have the council know, because this is important, the closer we get to reopening of schools, I think there's a lot of talk, and I want to make sure people have the facts as to everything that the city has done and what that has been supported by this council. We put in a tremendous amount of resources and effort and planning to make certain that we are doing everything that is necessary, including bringing in a third-party engineering firm to do the assessment. So, that's the status report. It's ongoing every single day, and when I say every single day, I mean seven days a week.
I thank Madam Manager for that update. I just, and again, I certainly applaud Christine Clancy.
I just, and again, I certainly applaud Christine Clancy for stepping up to the plate. And, you know, it's great to have somebody very knowledgeable and understanding of what's going on in those buildings. A question for you, Madam Manager. Are we getting any financial assistance from the state in regards to helping us with this, the situation with, you know, opening of the school and any, whether it's hot or filtered, whatever it may be that we have to order?
Counselor, yes, the, we are utilizing where appropriate and where approved CARES Act money, which actually came from the federal government, but comes to us through the state. The State Department of Revenue is overseeing the distribution of those funds. And so depending on the purpose, if it's related to the COVID reopening, they are approving many of these expenses, but we go on a case-by-case basis as to getting the approval from D O R.
I thank you for that update because I think it is so important. People, you know, parents are on the edge of their seat, they want to make sure that everything is safe. Teachers, they're obviously concerned, and not just in Lowell, but all over the country. So again, I thank you for that update. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sure, Counselor Rock.
Thank you, Samir. Following up with Counselor Conway's remarks, you know, as a parent of a hopeful in-school learning freshman next month, I'm very happy to see all the work that's being done. I know falling and always paying attention, how hard the city and the school are going to have worked together. And you just on this, I personally feel that all questions have been answered to those that do have legitimacy concerns about what's going on at our schools, the third party, all the equipment that's being bought, all the work that's being done, the overtime being put in, the private contracting that's being brought in as well. So I'm hopeful that for the kids' sake of the city of Lowell, that there's an agreement very soon and that we can get back to, you know, teaching, you know, our kids. You know, my biggest concern for those at risk, in need, students in the city of Lowell, not having a place to go and to learn, you know, not having the capability of, whether it be internet service or having someone in their home to teach them or to assist them in their lesson plans, I think would be just a giant detriment to the future of the city and to the kids themselves. So as a city counselor, Madam Manager, I'm very proud to see all the work that you and, you know, Fisher Clancy are doing. I know it's going to continue wherever the school begins, and I hope that this answers any and all questions about what Lowell is doing to get our kids back into school. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Counselor. Any further discussion? Thank you. Back to the motions. First motion tonight, Counselor Conway, request city manager provide an update regarding the hiring of our retired police officers for uncovered special details. Seconded by Counselor Samaras, Counselor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, it's my understanding that there's a bit of a glitch here, a recent glitch in the hiring of the retirees, officers, so that they can help build the, some of the details. And we've talked about this before. I know that Mr. Counselor Samaras put a motion on, I put a motion on, I think Counselor Elliott's put a motion on in regards to this. And I think that, you know, we have a great opportunity. We have seasoned individuals, great sources. They certainly are very, retirees are very knowledgeable, and they have tremendous experience, so we don't have to, we don't have to worry about that. So I'm wondering, could you, can you fill us in on that, what kind of, what glitch that I'm hearing in regards to the hiring of these, of the retirees? It's my understanding they have already been working, but then all of a sudden there was some kind of, some type of problem, Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Counselor, and to you to the council. We can get your report on this. The, as you know, the council supported and the legislature approved a home rule petition to allow the city of Lowell to utilize retired police officers for certain, for certain details in certain instances. The step that had to be taken, it's not a glitch, but it was, I guess overlooked in terms of, I think, police department, they've got ahead of the finalizing, the dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and it was entering into a memorandum of understanding with both the patrolmen's union and the, and the terror officers' union, which we don't expect should be problematic. I can turn it over to the city solicitor on that front, but we're hopeful, it's a matter of language, we have to amend to the collective bargaining agreement because detail work is part of collective bargaining. But allowing retirees to be called, there's a certain language that has to be agreed to and provided for. So, and that would be brought before the, or any amendment on the C B A. Christine, I don't know if you have something further to add?
No, I think that that pretty much covers it, Madam Donahue, and Manager Donahue, and the, I have been in conversations with the police department. The chief has identified language that he's looking to have in these upcoming agreements. And I would anticipate, as the manager said, we will have a report for the council, but we also anticipate that this is a process that will be resolved very quickly.
Thank you. I appreciate the report.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Madam Manager, can I just, when we say we're going to clear it up quickly, I'm sorry, but like ballpark, do you think it might be, is it just an agreement between them? We could have a, an answer by the end of the week maybe, or? Depends on how we meet?
I would, if I may, it will be measured in, not really in days, but in weeks, but really it just probably the nature of a few weeks this matter should be, should be resolved, and we should have agreements in place.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Second motion tonight, Counselor Mercia, request city manager find ways and means to extend the guardrail along Fisher Street to prevent vehicle cut-through at 150 Aiken Street. Seconded by Counselor Chow. Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you were coming down the street past Willett's Funeral Home, heading towards Lowell, you would come across a V in the street. Straight to the left would be a continuation of Aiken Avenue, and to the right would be Fisher Street. There is a small guardrail at the tip of the V. The property behind it is 150 Aiken Avenue. People coming the other way up Aiken Avenue in the opposite direction do not want to make a sharp left turn, so they come before the guardrail and they cut through this private property to get to Fisher Street. But I don't know if they realize, but it is private property. This motion is asking for help for those taxpayers that live there to provide relief by extending the guardrail so that this does not happen again. This is just the idea of this motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. 12-3, Counselor Mercia, request city manager have law department take appropriate steps necessary to address the abandoned home at 150 Featherstone Avenue. Seconded by, seconded by Counselor Chow. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Counselor Chow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 150 Featherstone Avenue is a foreclosure case, and it's in land court by a company named Talage. I hope I'm pronouncing it right. With respect to this property, they more or less kind of own it to some degree. Four of the five heirs have been served a given notice, and given a notice. They are trying to serve the final heir, the fifth child, and once he's given notice, the case can proceed. I understand the fifth heir has a son in Draken, so perhaps if they find the son, they'll find the father. Unfortunately, through land court, it is backed up due to the closure during COVID. Cases are moving rather slowly through the court. However, there is a lawyer on the case representing the heirs, and if the family pays off the total unpaid taxes, interest, and fees to the company Talage, they will withdraw the foreclosure case. This motion is asking to keep on top of this, as the neighbors had to endure this unsightly, neglected, overgrown vacant property since the mother died in 2013. Shortly after the mother died, a daughter and a son moved back in. They stayed there for only a year or so, then they moved out and never shut off the utilities. In the winter, the pipes froze, and the pipes busted, and water flowed into the next-door neighbor's property and caused very expensive damage to them, massive flooding in their basement. Let's get the property back to where the family can, some family can enjoy it. Keep it spruced up and bring the value of the neighborhood back to where it should be, just as I did with my other motion to address other neglected houses, such as the Andover Street, the one on Andover Street, 887, and the other one on Clock Road. These two properties are good just now, and there's family living in there, and they're happy, and they're taking care of it, and they brought the value up in the neighborhood. And I want to note through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, also is it possible to hold a company Talage responsible for keeping the property up to minimum maintenance, such as trimming the overgrown bushes and the weeds that are hanging over into the neighbor's property? And I appreciate the fact that they obtained this property and they're paying the back taxes, and there's no money owed on it. But in the meantime, I don't know where this company's from, but they're not doing their minimum maintenance to the, the property is a mess. And the other, and the neighbors surrounding there are paying the price for it. So that's the gist of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. 12-4, Counselor Mercia, request city manager provide a report and an explanation regarding what material is going into the Jersey barrier containment structure at the National Parking Lot on Dutton Street. Seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Rock. Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Dutton Street in the parking lot where the new parking garage is, sits a containment site with Jersey barriers around it, and in the bottom sits a large leak-proof rubberized material to hold some sort of what appears to be contaminated material. This motion asks for an explanation as to what's going to be stored in that enclosure, and just give us an idea of what's happening there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll get a report. I happen to be over there this week working, Counselor Mercia, and I talked to one of the guys, and they're telling me they're just putting the dirt there temporarily, but we'll get a report on it. So it didn't seem like it was anything bad, it just like they're moving, wherever they're moving the dirt from, they're storing it there on the rubber so it doesn't go into the asphalt and make a mess, but we'll get a full report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All those in favor, say aye. 12-5, Counselor Mercia, request city manager provide a report regarding the installation of a walkway along the river behind Lowell Memorial Auditorium, and how it will affect the monuments there. Seconded by Counselor Rock. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a registered speaker? Because I registered someone to speak.
I didn't have one. Not there with us.
Counselor, I didn't have one, I missed it.
You missed it?
Yeah.
I gave, I gave you a phone number to call this person. He's a veteran. He's the head veteran over there, and they, of course, you know that the auditorium is a home to the veterans. That's where they have meetings and ceremonies and things like that. But anyway.
Yeah, I think I missed, you want to put it off to the next meeting or?
No, but I thought, I even called him to remind him to be ready that you would be calling him. But here's the gist of the motion. It has come to my attention from the veterans group, and I met with them down there, at the auditorium, that there will be a lot of construction behind the Lowell Memorial Auditorium to erect a walkway along the river, and the grounds of the auditorium will be used to store the equipment during that time. Bench, benches, monuments, and that historic cannon have to be moved because it's a tight squeeze, and they got to put a crane in there, and they want to move all these things so that there's no damage to the benches, the monuments, and the cannon. But I fear that moving the cannon will cause severe damage, as I have seen the rot that has accumulated on this structure. I wish there was a way we could, you know, check, restore to the beauty this once was. It's a historic piece of memorabilia, and it's rotten out left and right, and I fear that if it's moved, it'll be destroyed. Now, the veterans group is very concerned about the trees, and I know that they have had a meeting with Diane Trad, and Diane Trad even called me, but even after the meeting, there's still a little bit of confusion. The veterans group is also concerned about the trees, that they are told must be cut down, and once the project is over, the trees will be replaced, there'll be different landscaping there. But I asked you, please, take a look at these trees in front of the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. They are sculptured so perfectly, and now they'll come down? The Lowell Memorial Auditorium management team does a spectacular job on maintaining the beauty of those trees. It would be a shame to take them down. I just want a better clarification to this issue, as there are many mixed signals here. I know it probably won't start relatively soon, but it's just confusing that they hear one thing and another, and it's never matching up. So please give me some information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. 12-6, Counselor Rock, request city manager have proper department implement that all real estate property, that all rental properties in the city have publicly posted information consisting of who the property owner is, along with phone number, with phone, email contacts, information to be posted on the property in a manner which, in a manner which follows proper guidelines. Seconded by Counselor Mercia. Counselor Rock?
Thank you, Samir. Motion basically speaks for itself, and hopefully if this is implemented, it'll give those that live in the neighborhood or the city employees or inspectors an easy means to find out if a violation is happening, or if there's a concern or a question with the guys who are property, you know, that has a landlord, especially a landlord that lives out of the city, out of the state. So I know that cities and towns do use this, and I actually know that some property owners in Lowell actually do do that as well. So I think if it's a universal ordinance or universal policy, I think it'd go a long way in helping. Thank you.
Thank you. Good motion. Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Manager Donahue. Madam Manager, remember sometime many years ago when Peter Richards had come on board as a city counselor along with you and me? And there was this issue that come up. We're And there was this issue that come up whereby we were concerned about people that owned property in Lowell, but they lived out of state. And when they lived out of state, the rules that we were setting was, we understand you live out of state, but if there's ever an emergency or anything, we'd like you to name someone in the area, in the city somewhere so that we can contact that person and get ahold of you and vice versa. But I don't know if it's implemented. I don't, because I called one day to ask some information of the assessor and I asked who owned the property and that person lived in, I believe it was New York. And I said, well, who is taking care of the property around here while that person is gone? It isn't easy to come from New York into the city to to address the concern and the complaint. Well, there was nobody listed. And I find that so hard to believe because didn't we make that a point?
I I do remember that, Counselor, and and I believe there was an ordinance. We'll look into that and
Yes, please.
see how this is because it was actually implemented, I think, through Neighborhood Services back then that was going around and collecting the information. So we'll look into that.
Okay, and on another note, that's a very good motion because this is a home on Andover Street and I'm going to say four thirty six Andover Street. The neighbors around there are a little bit furious because they're seeing a lot of traffic going into this particular house. I, I, we know that you can't have more than three that are unrelated people in that property. We, it's, plus you're not supposed, it's not supposed to be habitable upstairs in the attic. And yet there's people that we believe are renting in the attic. People in the neighborhood are keeping track of this. And then the owner put in all new windows. And when we called Inspeccional Services, he said, oh, those were already there. He never pulled a permit to get these windows done. There's so many things happening and I would like if we could address, I don't know if an inspector went over there to look. I don't know what happened. If I could have some information about that, please, Madam Manager. It's a very big house, but that's not the point. That's not a boarding house. It's not a rooming house. And it's going to be used as
Yeah, we will certainly look into that and and get a report for you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a good motion, Counselor. I just want to add that sometimes when the tenants don't take care of their properties and of course the owner is somewhere else, when a neighbor complains about the dirtiness, the trash around the house or what have you, many times the tenants just shrug their shoulders because they don't give a care because they're not responsible for taking care of properties. But if your landlord information provided, the neighbors can call or email the landlord directly. That would put more pressure on them to take care of the properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Rock?
Yeah, thank you. And to those points, you know, there'll be a motion in the future concerning, I believe, the fees and the fines that will be associated with property owners not taking care of their, of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion of the night, Counsel Chow. Request city councils support the enhancement of the U.S. Postal Service through November twenty twenty elections for the successful outreach and tabulation of the vote by mail program within the city. And request city manager immediately notify our representatives in the Congress, House and Senate of the council action and urge their immediate support, seconded by Counsel Mercy. Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself. Basically, I submitted the motion on Friday and of course separately and on the own Congress met on Saturday to put in the support for the United Postal Service. Basically, we would like to have the city manager, Madam Manager, buy a lot of support to the House and to Senate on behalf of the council body. We, we want the U.S. Postal Service to operate at full capacity. What it's supposed to do, basically, with the preliminary, the primary coming up on September first, I think there's about one million registered voter that requested vote in by mail. And I'm sure the number is going to be much higher for the, for the general. So with all the hard work that we did in terms of passing it in the state to have people vote by mail, you know, because of COVID nineteen safely and to have people participate in democracy as much as possible. If their votes don't get delivered on time or safely or what have you, all the hard work that we've been doing would just gone to waste. So we just want to make sure that Congress, the House and Senate, hear our support from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Rock?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you know, the guy's motion and I have tremendous respect for Counsel Chow. I think he does a great job. But my personal feeling on motions that really don't have much to do with the city itself and that are more of a state or national agenda, you know, I don't feel comfortable taking a stand on, especially those that have a political, you know, background either way. And and once again, I appreciate the, the, the idea behind the motion, but similar to ones that we've dealt with before where, you know, I just don't think that a city should get involved in in national or state things. And that's just the way I feel about it in general. This motion in particular, Counsel, please don't take it that way personally. It's just in general, the more a municipal body stays out of state and federal politics, I think the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor, except for Counsel Rock. Okay, thank you. Eight, twelve eight, Counsel Chow. Request appropriate council subcommittee hold a hearing to discuss measures for prevention of illegal dumping within the city of Lowell and request city manager invite representatives from the Inspeccional Services Department, Code Enforcement, police fire, DPW, as well as other relevant interested parties to attend. Seconded by
Second, please.
Counsel Rock. Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Rock for seconding that motion. Because of COVID nineteen, more people are staying home. And the good thing is they're cleaning their properties and getting rid of the trash and the garbage. The bad news is they're dumping all this garbage, this trash, all over the city at public spaces and parks. As a couple of other motions, I myself made motions before specifically to illegal dumping at car washes or, you know, just many like abandoned properties. But this motion is more broad, it's more proactive and basically to prevent illegal dumping. And I think to do that, we need to refer this to a appropriate subcommittee. I think it might be the Neighborhood Subcommittee or the Environment Subcommittee or maybe even Joint to invite the Inspeccional Services or the Code Enforcement representatives and other representatives, interested parties to discuss what we can do to prevent illegal dumpings in the future, you know, more of an educational process. We need just to educate the residents and have everybody keep their eyes open. It is a big health issues, you know, when you have all this trash and garbage all over the city. It attracts load-ins and of course with COVID nineteen, just a dirty city, dirty public places, it's just not healthy. Just doesn't really give you that look of a quality of life for a resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Ali?
I don't object to the motion. What I would like from you, Madam Manager, could we please get a list of the locations that the parks or DPW have responded on a consistent basis? And I know we don't want to make it public, but I think the, I think the response, the effective response is to put cameras there and prostitute in these locations, you know. Certainly what comes to mind, all the motions and maybe it's Counsel Mercy, of course they have. But I, I don't disagree. But I think it would be good to have a, I can tell you, you know, if you talk about the soccer field is a consistent location for illegal dumping. So maybe just having a list of locations and, you know, where, you know, the Worker Street, Lauren Street, they're, they're repeat locations. So I think that'll be helpful for the meeting.
Thank you. Counsel Mercy? You're on you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you there?
Yeah, you're off cam, you're off camera though too if you're, I don't know if you hit two buttons at once or whatever. There you are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm about to say, people don't want to hear it, but I'm going to say it anyway. I don't care because it has to be said. When we talk about illegal dumping, I'm talking about another type of dumping. And it's a health hazard and it's homeless people that have no place to go to the bathroom and they're going all over the place. I know this one guy, he's going on Merrimack Street. He, and there's another guy going on Appleton Street. They're going in Fox. And you can't blame them. There's, there's no place for them to go. And so, you know, it's a public health issue. It's a very, very serious issue. I'm going to tell you another instance. There was a business owner, from what I'm understanding, someone went to the bathroom in his doorway downtown. He didn't pick it up and he got fined. From what I'm understanding, he got fined for not picking it up. I mean, I, I, I can't even begin to tell you how troubling that is to hear. I mean, I don't know if we call DPW and say, send hazmat down there or what. I mean, I certainly really don't know if I could do that myself, but anyway.
Counsel, if you, if you can let me know off camera who, who that is because we have gotten complaints and and it is a serious problem. We have called a company to do the cleanup. We have paid a company, even if it's in a private doorway because of the nature of the, it's a hazmat. It's a hazardous situation.
Yep.
I, when we're told, when we get a call, DPW, we do, we do have someone on contract to go out and clean it up in those
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll, I'll
Find, I'd like to know so that we
Okay, I'll let you know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing, Madam Manager. I just noticed, I don't know if they got behind for a trash pickup this weekend. It seemed like a, a number of barrels in the downtown area were overflowing. So if we could just check on that, especially where it was the weekend, we had more traffic and walking traffic downtown during the Saturday and Sunday. It seemed like a number of barrels were just overflowing, so didn't look very good. If we could just check that out.
We will check that.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Next motion by myself, request city manager to provide a report regarding large truck traffic on and around Olive Street. Report to include possible solutions to lessen such traffic throughout that neighborhood, seconded by Counsel Rock. The motion speaks for itself. I guess it's, it could be GPS, but there seems to be like eighteen, eighteen wheeler traffic going up and down Olive Street, so we could find out what's happening over in that neighborhood. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Next motion of the night by myself, request city manager to provide a report regarding traffic flow around Boylston Street and Laurel Streets. Report to include increasing traffic flow on the side streets throughout the side streets and through the parking lot at store thirty eight, seconded by Counsel Samaras. Madam Manager, just with the new traffic pattern over there, seems to be a lot of people who are just flying through the parking lot at store thirty eight. And then, of course, we're getting reports of people flying up Sycamore and Burke Street. So if there's anything we can do in conjunction with the state while they finish up the project there to deter speeding down the other streets. And if there's anything we can do for Gold Star Restaurant and store thirty eight about the cars flying through their parking lot. So appreciate it. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Any announcements before we get to the executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one announcement. We are continuing to participate in the Stop the Spread campaign. That's the testing for coronavirus here in the city of Lowell. We're going to now be testing one day a week. Testing is tomorrow. It's going to be out at one thousand and one Pawtucket Boulevard in the parking lot, Cross River Place, I believe is, is the name of the facility. And it is a drive up testing that will be come in tomorrow until six P M. And again, this is part of the state's Stop the Spread campaign. So it was extended. As you recall, we were moving it around the city in, in, on a weekly basis. This will be in one location, one day a week for extended hours, as I said, from ten to six. So for, again, you don't need an appointment, though you can pre-register by calling. But you don't need to, you don't need symptoms and you don't need a doctor's recommendation. So this will, this is a, again, a, an assistance that the state is giving to communities to give everybody an opportunity to be tested for the coronavirus.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Counsel Mercy?
I don't actually have an announcement, but are we going to meet in the council chamber the next council meeting on September eighth? Or not?
Honestly, I don't know where we left that, so. Madam, did we?
Left it the first week of the, the first meeting in September.
Okay. Counsel Samaras? It's still on you, Counselor.
Didn't we request from the city manager a report from the Health Department as to what their opinion is to this also? Madam Manager, that was part of my motion.
We will get, we will get that. I, I, I do know that there continues to be, you know, in terms of indoor gathering, it can't be more than twenty five. But we, we can get that report from, from Joanne Belanger.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess my concern would be, you know, I have a problem with meeting in the council chamber, but if the public is not allowed to attend the meetings, is that, is that a violation of the open meeting law? If we're in the chambers and they can't be there, how would the public, how would the public, I guess, participate?
Right. We, we have spoken with LTC and with MIS about that. So because of the limit, and that includes the council and staff and, you know, other employees that would be there, it would be, it, it couldn't be open to the public at large because right now the governor still has no more than twenty five and also sixty distancing, which makes it logistically a challenge. But LTC and MIS have said that they could accommodate Zoom in the council chamber and have the public could participate, as well as if any member of the council wanted to participate in Zoom, as well as having in-person in the council chamber as well. Maran is on, he could explain it better than I am because I'm not technologically up to speed. But, but it is, it is possible to accomplish. And so that way, to your question, Counselor, it would be, we would be just what we're doing now. The public would be able to see it. They could watch it online. They could watch it on TV, but they could also participate remotely on Zoom. on TV, but they could also participate remotely, um, on Zoom, which is what the new rule was that the council had adopted. Moran, did I explain that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, you did.
Okay, yeah, so my my concern would be, you know, Mr. Mayor, uh, in watching the uh, school committee meetings over the past few weeks, um, when somebody attempts to, uh, participate from the public, you know, the quality, I think, is, uh, I'm sure you would agree, a little bit less than than stellar or or even understandable. So as long as that can be taken care of maybe, you know, uh, and obviously, me personally, I wouldn't want to, uh, force any of my colleagues to to go into the council chambers unless they are, um, you know, uh, ready to do so. So just by two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Mercier?
I'm not trying to force anybody to come if their doctor says they can't. Uh, I'm just asking a question because I don't know where we left it. That's all.
All right, why don't we, we'll get a report, uh, Madam Manager and send it out to everybody?
We'll get, we'll get the report from, uh, Joanne Belanger.
All right. And obviously, yes, we have to address the issue with the, uh, participation either through phone or Zoom. So we'll address that. Make sure that the quality's there. Councilor Elliott?
What what report are we looking for? I mean, I think we're at one point one percent in the state and I understand the concern, but what what report are we looking for? I mean, is is there a number on what in the city or I'm I'm I really don't understand what we're looking for. I mean, I personally, you know, it we should be back in the chamber and we should social distance and um, you know, there are plenty of protective measures. We're asking our students to go back to school sometimes soon. So I, but I just
Okay.
There was a question, um, by, you know, Council Samaras, and I supported that. So we're gonna start back in the spring, but I I I'm just confused as to what number we're looking for from the Health Department.
Okay. All right. Uh, Council Samaras, sure.
I I just want to know. A part of my motion was to ask the City, the Health Department to, uh, analyze this situation and see, give their opinion as to whether we should meet or not. That's all I'm asking for. And they have the right to do that. The Health Department has the right to do that. The state, you know, has not met their level, the State House has not met, they're still on Zoom and what have you. But if the Health Department gives us a clear, uh, setting, I I can, I'll accept that. But at this point, I would like the opinion of the Health Department. That's what I asked for originally.
That that was the request I do remember, Councilor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other announcements or concerns before we? Okay, um, I did want to mention one other thing. Today I was, uh, able to participate with Congresswoman Trahan. Um, we received, um, well, state of Massachusetts received, um, thousands and thousands of face masks from, uh, Taiwan. Uh, we met with representatives, uh, from the country and uh, Lowell was benef- benefited by receiving three boxes, um, again, thousands of face masks to distribute to people who need them. Um, so it was a nice event, um, developing relationships with the Taiwanese government. And, uh, we're very grateful for all the, uh, face masks and building a relationship with them. Um, thank you. So now we're gonna, um, go into executive session and we will, um, we will adjourn from executive session. Right, okay. So, um, city council, executive session. Executive session to consider and discuss the possible purchase or sale of properties. Bird Street Site, Hamilton Canal District. Public discussions of which may have detrimental effect on negotiating of position of the city alone. And further to discuss matters of litigation. Um, public discussions in which may have detrimental effect on the city's position. Uh, in open session announced. Okay, so I need a motion of entering the executive session by Councilor Rook, seconded by Councilor Chow. Roll call? Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott? Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Noon? Councilor Rook?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Aces? So now we'll, uh,